And thank you, Carrie, for turning the recording on. Welcome to the SBA's webinar on the school board's role in hiring and firing employees. We are pleased to have attorney Pietro Lynn from the firm of Lynn Lynn Blackman and Menitzky with us to provide information on this very important topic. Tonight's webinar is sponsored by Vermont School Boards Insurance Trust, VSBIT. If you have questions, please type them in the Q and A box. And if you have technical issues, please contact Carrie Lamb. Her phone number is 802-477-3601. We will be following up tomorrow with an email, including a copy of today's presentation. Thank you to everyone who has joined us for this webinar and of course, to Pietro for presenting. With that, we will get started. And Pietro, the microphone is yours.
Okay, well Sue, don't go away because what I have in mind is that you will be as participatory as you want. If you think I'm missing something, if you have some questions along the way, and just as importantly, if there are questions that appear, please feel free to jump in and we will try to address them in a way that's timely. So hello to everybody. Many of you I know, I can't actually see you, but I know you're here and it'll be fabulous to spend an hour with you. So let's go to the first slide. What are we here to talk about tonight? Well, I've been working with boards for, I would say, many, many years. And one of the areas where boards maybe are not as sophisticated as they could be is around their roles in the hiring, supervision, management, termination, and public relations process as it relates to employees. And I think in the conversations that VSBIT, VSBA, and I, Sue in particular, have had, it occurred to us that it might be a good idea to talk with all of you about some of the key issues that we are encountering, areas where potentially there are legal liabilities, so that we can explain what the law requires of you, how you can effectively comply with it, how you can mitigate the exposures that exist, and ultimately, how you can do the work that you want to do as effectively as possible. So here are the issues we're going to talk about tonight. We're going to talk about the statutes that establish the authority of the board and parenthetically, the superintendent around hiring issues. We're going to talk about the legal exposures, that is, the kinds of lawsuits that may arise if we don't do it just so. We'll talk about maintaining flexibility when you hire people so as not to get sued. And then the termination process, what that looks like. And often, as part of that termination or supervision process, board members and administration are asked to speak publicly on those issues. And I'll have a few descriptions of what limitations may exist. And just as importantly, how you can communicate what is important to your district and perhaps to you personally without incurring legal liability. Okay, so let's talk about the board's role. And the beginning place for all of this analysis is always the statutes. Vermont has a set of statutes that establish relative rights and responsibilities within the context of almost every function that boards and administrators are supposed to be engaged in. There is nothing in the general authorization statute for school boards that describes their role or its role in the hiring or the firing process or the supervision process for employees. It talks about policy governance and budgetary issues and a whole host of other very specific issues that boards are supposed to deal with, but it is largely silent on issues having to do with employment. The catchall, which in some ways encompasses the broad powers that exist for boards, is that you are responsible as a board for the general supervision and operation of the district. But there are some statutes, and we'll talk about what they are, that have a specific role for the board. And that comes in the context of hiring, that comes in the context of supervision, and certainly in connection with termination. And we'll talk about the kinds of termination that exists. You all who have been on boards for a while understand that the difference between a termination, on the one hand, and a non-renewal, on the other. Termination is the immediate dismissal of an employee. And a non-renewal is where you say goodbye to someone, tell them they're fired, and live with them for five months. That's the difference. The board will have a significant role in either one of those decisions for many, if not all, employees. We also know that aside from the statutory bases for board involvement, again, we're going to talk about specifically what those are, there's also a series of collective bargaining agreements that generally exists between the district, that is, school boards, and either the teachers or the support staff, or mostly both. And those have specific roles that are identified for the board in the context of usually grievances, but again, making decisions around disciplinary, including termination determinations. Okay, so what about the superintendent? And this is an area where I think it's very important to consider the interplay in the statutes between what is contemplated for the superintendent and what is expressly required for boards. So under Section 242, that is 16 VSA Section 242, the superintendent is the chief executive officer of the supervisory union or the district. They're responsible for carrying out policies. And when it comes to hiring, there is a process that is identified in the statute. If it is a licensed employee. Now, who are those people? They're teachers, they are administrators in certain positions, principals, special educator administrators, and others who are required to have a license. Those people must be nominated to the board under the statute in connection with the hiring process. And those nominations come one at a time. Think about how that works. The superintendent, through a process that's been established, usually in consultation with the board, forwards one name to the board, and the board then decides on an up or down vote whether that person will be offered the job. And if the person is not offered the job, that is a down vote, then it's on the superintendent to nominate another person until the board is satisfied and votes to hire the person. That is what is contemplated. Now, I know from personal experience that that is not always the process that is followed. But if you are trying to remain true to the statutes and what they contemplate, that is the process that the statutes lay out. But what about unlicensed employees? People who drive your buses, parrot educators, people who work in food service? All of those people are unlicensed. Coaches, unlicensed. Athletic director, largely unlicensed. Those people, under Section 242, are hired and fired by the superintendent. The statutes have no role for school boards in that process. Next slide. And what about superintendents? Well, there are specific statutes having to do with some employees, and the board must follow those statutes in connection with the employment of principals, teachers, superintendents. The statute having to do with superintendent says that when you're hiring, and parenthetically, we'll get to firing, you need the advice of the secretary. That they will be employed, that is, superintendents must be employed with a written contract, but may not have one in excess of five years. So the six-year deal you were going to offer your superintendent? No way, it is illegal. It's got to be more than one year and less than five years. The superintendent may be dismissed for cause or as specified in the contract of employment. And we'll get to that in a minute. What this suggests is that there are some ways to negotiate deals in your contract that do not require cause to support termination. Notice of nonrenewal for a superintendent must be made of May 15th in the year that the contract expires. And then finally, if you don't hire a superintendent, then the duties can be assigned to a school principal or other qualified persons. That's the statute having to do with superintendents. And principals. Principals, again, can be hired after recommendation by the superintendent. They can serve in more than one school. They have a contract for a term of not less than one year, but not more than three years. So remember with superintendents, they had five years? Principals only get up to three years. And if they have more than two years of tenure in your district in the same position, they have renewal rights so that if they are not notified by February 1st of the year that their contract is to expire, then they have a right of renewal. They're entitled to an executive session hearing if they are terminated and have for cause rights if they are tenured. Okay. Well, what about, hold on a second, let me get here to the slide. The VSBA model policy, we're talking about hiring, right? We've talked a little bit about hiring of principals, hiring of superintendents. You can give them contracts, typically one to three years, maybe as much as five if you just love that superintendent candidate. There's some wiggle room in terms of what that contract can say. There's this universe of what needs to be done. If we're going to fire them, we're going to talk more about that later. But the VSBA policy really captures what this process needs to look like. And I always take my cap off to VSBA because I look through these policies more than I care to share. And I am universally impressed with the quality of the work. And I encourage all of you to make sure you look at the hiring and recruiting policy that exists in connection with your hiring practices. It is a well-crafted, helpful document. This is part of it. So we talked about, number one, right? The appointment is made by the board on nomination by the superintendent. They will be subject to pre-employment screening process approved by the board. So we need a process. And oftentimes, we don't think as clearly around what that process is going to look like as we probably should. When I work with boards, what I oftentimes tell them is that if we are going to make a search for a position, whether it's a teacher or a principal or a superintendent, we need to be very clear in terms of what that process looks like. We need to make sure that the process is evenly applied to every single candidate. And there is equity for every single candidate in the way that they are treated, the questions they are asked, the way the decisions are made. And ultimately, some of you have heard me say this before, if the process has integrity, the results will be unassailable. Okay, contracts of employment or notification of employment will be conditional pending receipt of criminal records, check information, and evaluation of that information. Now, most of you know this, but I'm going to say it anyway. Under 16 VSA Section 255, see, I remember these things because I use them so much. Under that statute, every single employee who is going to have unsupervised access to kids has to undergo a background check. And there must be a determination made based on that background check as to whether we will hire that person. Now, what's interesting about that is there are not many disqualifying crimes that are identified in the statute. And so largely, this is a qualitative decision that is going to be made by either the board or the superintendent, likely the superintendent, about whether we want to hire this person we thought ought to have the job, but who is now potentially disqualified by virtue of the background check. What I would suggest to you as a board, it would be very helpful to your superintendent if you have some thoughtful conversations about the kinds of criminal convictions or police encounters that you think ought to disqualify someone from employment. That way, your superintendent is not making it up as she or he goes along. And that way, your superintendent is reflecting the values of your community and of your board. Now, that doesn't mean that every single circumstance that comes to a superintendent by way of a background check is going to be pre-answered by the board. And it doesn't mean that your superintendent is going to come to you with every decision around these issues. But it is helpful, again, to pre-plan, to have conversations about the kinds of, let's say, not kid-directed convictions that maybe ought to disqualify somebody from employment in the district. An example is this. What do you do with somebody who has a history of violent criminal conduct? What do you do with somebody who has a history of criminal dishonesty? Are these people who you will hire for your district? And how old is too old for those convictions? Those are all things that are not going to be answered by the statute and need to be answered by you when those background checks come back. There's some more discussion here about the VCIC check. Employees who have been employed for fewer than two years in Vermont Public Schools are considered probationary teachers and may be offered a probationary contract. See, the brilliant minds at VSBA are anticipating the other statutes that govern hiring and firing, and that is, you don't need to write it down, 16 VSA Section 1752, which is the statute that governs the hiring and firing of teachers. And under that statute, people who have been teaching in Vermont schools, not just your school, any school in Vermont, for two or more years are tenured. And they have greater-than-at-will rights under the statute. And if you non-renew them or you terminate them, they go to the board for a louder mill hearing. See, that's a preview of coming attractions. We're going to talk about those issues in a few moments. So let's talk about the kinds of issues. We're still in hiring, we're not talking about firing just yet. So let's talk about the issues having to do with hiring that I consider to be problematic. The areas where boards and administrations can get themselves into trouble. So I said before, boards hire principals, superintendents, teachers, and other licensed personnel. So this is on you, board members, to make sure we do this right, to make sure that we don't engage in unlawful discrimination. And now, remember when I say that unlawful discrimination? Because the hiring process is laden with discrimination. You're making decisions on the fly about the quality of the candidates, about the credentials they present, which ones look better, which ones make better impression. That is using your powers of discrimination. But it is different than unlawful discrimination. There are requirements for hiring people under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we're going to talk about those. And they can be really quite onerous. And then we move on to the issue of affirmative action. Now, I know from many of my good friends who are on boards and who act as administrators in the state that we live in a world right now where the issue of equity inclusion rightfully is one that we are grappling with. And we're working very hard to get to a place where our schools are a better reflection of what we want our communities to be. But we need to be mindful that if we engage in decisions around affirmative action, if they are done in a way that is not consistent with the law, then we incur liabilities for the district that perhaps we do not want to take on. And then finally, when we hire someone, there's always this question. What is the way we are going to hire them? What are the terms that we will enter into? Because generally, there's a negotiation, not with teachers, but with administrators, and sometimes with others who are unlicensed. We have a negotiation around what those contracts look like. Okay, so let's get specific. What about this question? You know, this is a question, and I think this more often happens in smaller districts or supervisory unions. But the board has traditionally hired everyone in the district, and they like it that way. Is that against the law? Can it continue? Well, I think I showed you what the statutes contemplate. If you're asking me about best practice, if you're asking me what I think you should do, if you want to act in a way with what the legislature, you know, sort of envision for the hiring process, well, I don't recommend that the board get down in the weeds and hire everybody. On the other hand, what I do know is this, that the board has the authority, the greatest authority within the district. It can do what it wants. And if the board really, really doesn't want to comply with what the statutes say, then, you know, my view is, you're not going to get binged, right? Your employees are not going to be able to claim they're not really employed by you, and you're not going to be in a position where you're not really employing them if the board is involved. But I would say this, that I think it's problematic for the board to engage in the kind of thoughtful hiring process for everybody, that the hiring process is probably best done by administrators, whose job it is when it comes to the unlicensed people. Okay. Next slide. Discrimination in hiring. All right, so settle in. This is kind of a long slide, and I'll do it as quickly and succinctly as I can. But this is an area where I worry for you. I worry for you because I am exposed from time to time to hiring processes that don't go as well as we like, where claims arise relating to the way that the hiring process is administered. So this is what we know about discrimination in hiring. We can never make a decision based on protected characteristics, and not just wholly based on protected characteristics. Like, I thought that Johnny was a terrible candidate, in part because he was white, but the other part was because he was obnoxious and he made fun of him. If the protected characteristic was even partially in the decision-making process, the process is potentially the basis for a discrimination claim. So we need to set aside those. And here's my little laundry list of what those are, right? Race, religion, ethnicity, age, veteran status, sexual orientation, gender identity, marital status, crime victim status. You know, that one, I've never seen anybody get discriminated against because of their victim status. But that's there, right? A place of birth, disability, and race, color. So look, that's a lot of things. And then we move on to this question of disability. All right, these are all the protected characteristics. And then we segue into disability discrimination. Like, what did that universe look like? And this is what we need to know. Under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and therefore, under Vermont law, anybody who is disabled or impaired or regarded as disabled or regarded as impaired, right? You don't even have to be disabled. You don't even have to be impaired. But if that is the basis, someone thinks you are, but you're not, or you used to be. If that is the basis for a decision to not hire, then you have broken the law, you've engaged in unlawful discrimination. Yikes. What is a disability? It's a condition that substantially limits a major life activity. What is an impairment? It's some condition that does not rise to the level of disability. Yikes, you can imagine, it's something, we can't really quite say what it is, but it's not quite a disability. And of course, being regarded as impaired means, you know, somebody thinks you're impaired, you have some problem physically or emotionally, and you don't. And that enough is enough to create a basis for a disability claim. So this is just to give you a sense of how broad ADA claims can be in connection with adverse employment action that is not hiring? Look, these are the things under the ADA that are not disabilities. Almost anything else that affects a major life activity like reading and breathing and walking and talking and relating to other people, everything, everything you do, brushing your teeth, you know, driving a car, going to work, everything that's not these things probably is a disability. But if it's not that, and it's an impairment, right? Not quite a disability, something less, these are the things that are not impairments. Yikes, left-handedness. Well, I always thought it was better to be left-handed. Predisposition to illness or disease that is not caused by an immune disorder. Joe or Sally is sick a lot, but they don't have an immune disorder. Common personality traits like poor judgment or quick temper, which are not part of a mental health condition. How are we going to know that? How are we going to know when the quick temper or bad judgment are caused by things that don't actually rise to the level of a mental health condition? And then, of course, poverty, prison record, lack of education, those things are not impairments. But what you see is this. The universe of qualities that can be an impairment or a disability is indeed a large one. So when we make decisions around hiring, it is best, no, it is critical that we be blind to those issues, that they not enter into our calculations, that they don't enter into the group discussion, that the decision ultimately is not dependent in whole or in part on those considerations. Okay. And then we have an obligation, forget about this question of can we hire on that basis, right? What can we consider when we hire people? This is just the process of hiring people. Under the ADA, we have an obligation to accommodate people who are not yet our employees, but who want to be. So what we do is we tell people in advance, in writing, what the hiring process contemplates, right? So all of you on boards, all of you who are administrators in this audience, all, hold on a second, 38 of you. We need to be aware of what that process looks like. We need to communicate it to people. So if it means a meeting with the board, where the board's going to ask questions, we need to know if there is some requirement for an accommodation. You know, the example might be this. If we're doing a Zoom meeting and I'm hard of hearing, then we need a way to make sure that I can read the questions and respond in writing back to you or verbally back to you. But to know whether that's necessary, we need to publish the process in advance and make it clear to all our applicants, regardless of whether they have a disability, because parenthetically, we don't want to know. We don't want to know what their disability is. We just want to know if they need accommodation. And then, once they need accommodation, we can engage in the interactive process, find out what accommodation is necessary, determine whether it's reasonable, provide the accommodation if it is, and decline the accommodation if it is not. We may ask during the interview process that the applicant will need accommodation to do the work if they are hired, but only, only if the disability is obvious. The question we can only ask our employees is this, or people we are looking to hire, can you do the job with or without accommodation? That's the question we can ask employees. And frankly, as we go along tonight, that is going to be the emphasis of what I tell you. The conversation that we engage in with people we are about to hire needs to be blinded. It needs to be restricted to the kinds of questions that avoid all the considerations. Let's go back, let's go back, let's go back. Here it is. All the considerations here, all these protected characteristics, we don't want to know. Because if we know and we respond, we suggest that it enters into the decision, and it may not. Okay, so what is the other issue that we can deal, that we often deal with in connection with hiring? Social media. We live in an age where everybody wants to go online and check up on people who have, you know, sort of applied for jobs. You know, we can use this for vetting. So this is what I would say. We have a statute in Vermont. And the one thing we know based on that statute is we cannot force people to disclose to us their social media activities. And I'm not going to go through each one of these things individually. What I will tell you is that these, this is straight from the statute, and you'll see D at the very bottom, 4D says, you can't even get them to sign a release. And so if you're interviewing me, and I say, no, go ahead. And so if you're interviewing me, and I say, "No, go ahead, check my social media, here's my password, here's my site", no, no, never. Okay. Well, what about?
We have a question, Pietro.
Let's hear the question.
Okay. Says, "If a board is trying to increase diversity in their staffing, how can that be accomplished?"
Okay, so hold that thought, Sue, and let me answer it when we get to affirmative action. Because I, you know, I spend time thinking about these issues, and how we can do this in a way that's effective and not against the law. And forgive me, but I have been watching from a distance, as many boards have, as I say, grappled with these issues, worked to increase diversity in the workplace, which is a laudable goal that I support, and have done it wrong, and have exposed themselves to significant liability. And I, you know, Sue, what I would say to you is that it's only happened since good fortune that they have not been sued. Now, maybe they will later be sued, but they have not yet been sued. Okay, so hiring in the age of Google, right? Betty Board Chair decides to check up on the applicant for principal. She Googles her and finds out she sued her last employer. She sees lots of social media posts where the applicant expresses that she supports Blue Lives Matter, not Black Lives Matter. Are we in trouble if we do not hire the applicant? And so what this hypothetical is meant to think about out loud is what are the kinds of considerations that we can take into account when we make hiring decisions? And is it a good idea to Google employees? Because you know, your Google activities, they don't go away, they live in the universe forever and ever to be discovered by enterprise and plaintiff's lawyers when they check your computer in discovery when you get sued. The question for you is this, do you want to know? And I would suggest to you that perhaps you do not. That perhaps knowing this particular employee's political views. Now, political views are not a protected characteristic. And we can make decisions based on political views without running afoul of all these discrimination laws. Parenthetically, I worry about a claim of an adverse employment action based on constitutional rights to free speech. But this, look, the bottom line for me is this. What I think boards need to focus on are credentials, an ability to do the work, an interview, to, you know, how the person presents, and whether their qualities seem to fit the position. Are we in trouble if we don't hire the applicant? Probably not, probably not. But does this information help us really in better understanding things that we can't legitimately inquire into during the course of an interview? Okay, so let's talk about this social media internet problem. Right? The problem is this, researching candidates on the internet and through social media during the hiring process can reveal individual characteristics that would otherwise remain private. The kinds of things we would never, ever ask. Things like gender, race, age, religion, those are all protected characteristics. When we know that information, where we seek it out, and we then make decisions that are adverse to the applicant, we create what is called in the law, a prima facie showing of unlawful, not lawful, unlawful discrimination. And so this last part is my issue. So we create legal exposures, and then there's the moral dimension. How much of what we see on the internet is necessarily true? What are we going to do once we learn this information, which may or may not be true, about the job applicant? We can't banish it from our minds. It's there in all perpetuity, regardless of whether we want to consider it or not. And is that fair, that's the moral dimension, to the applicant, or alternatively, to other applicants? Very quickly, there is in Vermont something called, we're gonna get to affirmative action in a minute. This is the "ban the box" law, right? So just so you know, this is what it is. This is another hiring issue for boards or administrators. There was, at the time this law was passed, a conviction on the, sorry, that's a pun. There was a belief in the legislature that people deserve an ability to explain to their employers whether, why they were convicted, what the facts were, mitigating circumstances, and they would never get that chance unless the question of convictions or police interactions, or criminal behavior were removed from the application process initial. And once you get by the initial vetting process, that is, trying to decide which applicant fit the minimum credentials for the job, then you can ask those questions about criminal convictions. And parenthetically, if you live in our universe, schools, almost everybody, you know, parenthetically, hopefully, everybody is going to be background checked, and we're gonna find out. But you get to ask those questions once we get by that initial first go-through to determine who meets the minimum qualifications. So that's the end of the box. Go ahead.
We have another question, Pietro.
Alright.
"If we have a public forum on a candidate, and a member of the public brings up information that they have Google searched, what is the best route for board or administrators to take to ensure that it's clear that it's not part of the hiring process?"
Okay, so that is such a great question. Let me tell you, so going back to, you know, you are all gonna, you're gonna roll your eyes when you hear me say this, because I always do. Process. And so when you create these public forums where community members are participating, which I do not oppose, I think it is important to establish in advance the ground rules, right? People need to understand what the expectations are if they wish to participate. I'm not answering the question yet, I will, but it's a multifactorial response, right? The beginning part is, we tell people, "We are not looking for information from you. What we are looking for from you is questions." You may ask questions that are germane to the following subjects of this applicant. Because, public, we are running this hiring process in a way that's consistent with the law. What we're not gonna talk about are things that may lead to these protected characteristics. What we will talk about, and what you may ask about, are these things that have to do with credentials, and experience, and vision for the future, and all the things that matter for the job application process. So what do we do when we have somebody who, you know, is sort of not gonna comply, and wants to say, you know, can't help themselves, and says, "You know, Mary Jo was accused of the following things, or Mary Jo is, you know, is very religious, and I think it's bad, so we shouldn't hire Mary Jo." What do we do? We immediately respond, and we say to the person, "Thank you for your comments, but that's not what we told you in the ground rules for this process. We cannot consider that, we will not consider that information. Thank you, next person." I think that's the only legitimate way to do it. Now, again, you know, like you can't unring that bell, you know whatever it is they said, but it is important in a very public and an immediate way to remind people, what are the criteria that we think are germane to this decision? And what is the information that we cannot, will not rely on in making this decision? I hope that answered the question. Alright, so the BSBA, oh, here we are again, my favorite, the BSBA Model Policy Language Process, right? So this talks about the contingent offer. And I will say this, so this has to do with hiring with a contingent offer. Oftentimes, this has to do in the policy with criminal background checks. But let me say this to you, we are entitled also to make a contingent offer if the employee needs accommodation in the job. So if we have somebody who needs a reasonable accommodation for their disability, we can say, "Sure, we're gonna hire you, assuming we can reasonably accommodate your disability." Now, remember everything I said before about impairments and the ADA and all that? We don't accommodate impairments, we only accommodate disabilities. We can't decide not to hire, and we can't decide to fire, or do other bad things to people who are employed by us, or want to be employed by us based on impairment. But we don't accommodate impairments. So there are really great reasons for us to tell people, "You're hired, probably, except here are the contingencies." Okay. Affirmative action in hiring, as distinct from recruitment. So I told you about this a little earlier. We, the US Supreme Court, which incidentally is becoming more, not less, conservative on these issues. And I expect if this issue gets in front of the US Supreme Court again, we're going to see even tighter restrictions on affirmative action. But as of now, the only way that we can consider protected characteristics like race is if we have adopted a plan, if the plan identifies past underrepresentations of protected characteristics in a position for which the employer wishes to use affirmative action. So we have to demonstrate that we have tried in the past to hire people, and that relative to our community, these folks are underrepresented, and have been in hiring, underrepresented in the position. And then, the protected characteristic may only be used as a plus factor in hiring decisions. All other things being equal, we can consider some protected characteristic, race, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, whatever that protected, veteran status. We can consider those things as a plus factor. Meaning, if everything else is equal in terms of credential, if the impression made is all the same, then this will be the thing that puts one applicant over the top. But as you can see, this is a very narrow exception. And comes only where we've done good, hard statistical analysis, and demonstrated, we need to get people of a certain protected characteristic. So when I hear my friends say, "We need to hire a person of color", and they do indeed hire a person of color, I worry. I worry because this is the law. I worry because if there is a non-person of color who applied for the job, who can argue that their credentials were as good or better, and we don't have a plan, we have not done our statistical analysis, and in fact, we have made decisions that were based in part on protected characteristics, then I would suggest to you that we have violated the law. Now, that having been said, it does not mean that we are restricted in the activities that we can engage in around recruitment. And so I think, Sue, in answer to the question that was raised, a good question, what do we do? Well, we work incredibly hard to find people who fit our goals around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we solicit their application for a job, we recruit them. We have to tell them, you know, it's no sure thing, you're gonna get this job. We can't rely on any protected characteristics, but we, you know, we would like you to apply for this position. That is the challenge all, and again, if there is another decision that winds its way up to the US Supreme Court, if they again have an opportunity to decide this issue, I would be unsurprised if the United States Supreme Court said, "You don't get to consider any protected characteristic for any reason." Okay. So there's, so my good friend Sue Saglowski already knows this, because we see it in the policy. The hiring policy is very clear. We don't consider protected characteristics, right? We do it based just on character, professional qualifications, and critical job requirements. Unless, unless we created our plan, we've done the statistical analysis, and we use only a plus factor. But I don't know a single district in the state that has done that. So let me say this, if we do make decisions based on protected characteristics, whatever they are, and I, you know, I extend this out beyond, it could be based on gender. We're only gonna hire a male boys' basketball coach, because that's the way it's always been. The minute we say those words, in contravention of our policy, and in violation of the law, we have created legal liabilities. Alright, so what do we do, right? You know, so this is, this hypothetical is my cautionary tale. I know we all want to create connection, it's what school people do, it's what makes you wonderful. It's also unwise. It is a interview strategy that creates legal liability where there ought to be none. And so here's the, you know, here's the example. And of course, all my examples come from real-life experiences. A new teacher, one of the board members says, "Great community to live in, housing is cheap, people are nice, the community supports the school." The member asks if the applicant has children, right, because that's just a nice thing to do. The member asks, so the applicant says she does. She and her partner are looking for a place like this, their children have severe disabilities that need a place that will provide for their intensive needs. Aren't you sorry you asked? Because guess what happens when you don't hire this person? Right? All of a sudden, you have information about potentially sexual orientation and disability, and all of these things are things you don't want to know, and things you don't want to consider. And so what I would say to you is that the best thing for you to do is not to ask these questions. Because as much as you want to build connection, connection creates exposures. So what about this? "This is the script I want for you," and I'm not gonna go through this whole thing, but this is, you know, this is the colorless, dry, boring, but legally safe and effective way to do an interview, right? Limit follow-up questions to credentials and qualifications and job-related issues. Don't use it as a get-to-know-you session. Create metrics for evaluating applicants. What do I mean by that? Meaning, we need to score people, score them. And we go, "Applicant A got ones and threes and twos and sevens in the following areas." And then you can add up these scores, you can compare people to each other, and make decisions on that basis. Is it fundamentally different than what you're doing in your head anyway? The answer is no, you're probably doing that in your head anyway, but think about how that is a process that looks like it has integrity. Because if somebody challenges that process, we roll out the numbers and we say, "Here it is." This is what the board, this is what the committee, this is what the administration scored this person in areas having to do with the job, not things having to do with protected characteristics. Never explain why you chose not to hire without careful thought. Loose lips sink ships. And we don't, and as much as you might want to soften the blow, the best answer is, we will get back to you in writing. And when you send something in writing, it is dry and bloodless, and it says, "Thank you for your interest, there were many qualified applicants, we chose someone else, thank you, have a good life." Never make promises or guarantees at an interview, and I don't need to explain why. So this is the checklist that I suggest for all of you. And I just, you know, more stuff, I'm gonna send this all out to Sue, I'm looking at the time. We're not gonna talk about it, I'm gonna keep going. Alright, and then finally, so you've decided to hire someone, you understand this. The only people in your schools who get contracts as a matter of law are principals, superintendents, teachers, and people subject to your collective bargaining agreements. and people subject to your collective bargaining agreements. Every, everybody else, every, every, everybody else, the assistant principals, the special ed coordinator, whomever it is, the confidential administrative assistants, none of those people are entitled to contracts. If you want to give it to them, you can, but they don't get them as a matter of law. And remember this, if you give them a contract that makes them more than at will, then they are entitled to louder mill due process if you fire them. Louder mill due process means they get a pre-termination hearing, meaning they sit down, they get to hear all the criticisms against them, they get to respond to them, then, then the decision maker takes a break, considers the information, presumably terminates, and then they get a trial in front of the board. And I, you know, some of you have heard me say this, how much do we want to do two-day trials in front of the board for $3,500 a season coaches? But if you're going to give them a contract, you're, they're entitled to louder mill due process if you're going to terminate them. So consider whether you want to do that for employees who aren't entitled to. So, um, yeah. There's a way around with a contract, a way around louder mill, and that's this. So you can include in the contract, language like this, employer may terminate this agreement with 60 days written notice, employee shall not report to work during the notice period. Done. And that means without cause, right? Without cause, you can terminate somebody with 60 days severance. And all you have to do is make sure you include the right language. What I often see in these contracts is a three-tiered approach. The first tier is terminate immediately for cause. And what I would say to you is we don't give severance, you know, if there's sexual misconduct or something like that, yeah, we'll go to trial. Second tier, without cause termination. Third tier, mutual agreement, right? We both decide we don't want to do this anymore. I, I will tell you, I've never seen that mutual agreement. Everybody just says, ah, we want to be done. So typically, we just focus on the first and second tier. So, so look, the, under the statutes, you all board members are responsible for the termination or non-renewal of, of the teachers and the principals and of course, superintendents. Seventeen fifty-two is the section having to do with teachers, and under that section for immediate termination, the superintendent suspends the teacher with pay pending a hearing before the board. The board must have a hearing unless the teacher waives the right to a hearing. And then the board makes a decision about whether to engage in immediate termination, the teacher is either terminated or not, and if the teacher is terminated, the teacher may pursue grievance and use the collective bargaining agreement to walk up the ladder of steps to ultimately arbitration. Principals, the, the board, so this is amazing. The board, where, where you fire a principal or wish to fire a principal, this must be a board decision, and you have a decision to terminate, followed by a hearing in front of the board, or the board can tell the principal that he or she is entitled to a hearing, and then terminate after the hearing. But in either event, the board is going to engage in what we call the quasi-judicial process, and the board is responsible for sitting as a judge and a jury and hearing evidence with cross-examination and a record created and a right of appeal and documents submitted and exhibits marked and a written decision issued at the end of it with findings of fact and conclusions of law. And phew, that is an expensive, time-consuming, divisive process that, you know, frankly, is only good for the lawyers. Okay. So that's what it looks like. Very briefly, so what, what is this just cause thing? So remember I talked to you about negligent, well, I talked to you about non-renewal, that's that you're fired in April and you live with us until June, and immediate termination is you did something bad and you're gone right away? So you as board members need to know this. There are two kinds of performance problems, and how you address them as a board, how you address them as an administration, depends on where they fall. It's either negligent performance, that ends in, that ends in non-renewal, you're fired and you lived with us for five months. Misconduct is the thing that might lead to immediate termination. And the difference is this, negligent performance is the employee who wants to do it right, tries to do it right, and can't manage it. Misconduct is the thing that they do, that they know or they, they should know, they should not be doing, showing up late, engaged, hitting kids, using bad language. There's a, the universe of things that are misconduct, and that gets an investigation, what happens with immediate termination at the end. And you board members, if your administration has not bothered to interview the employee about misconduct, then they haven't done it right. Due process exists for your employees where they are either going to be involved in the negligent misconduct case, or they're going to be involved, I'm sorry, negligent performance, negligent, um, sorry, negligent performance case, or in a misconduct case. And this is what you need to know. So, so listen to me, I know I'm going fast, I know it's six twenty-six, but listen, listen, listen to me on this. When it comes to negligent performance, that is the teacher or the principal who is not doing the job the way they should despite best actions. We owe them for purposes of just cause the following. We have to identify with specificity the performance deficiencies. We have to tell them what good performance looks like. We need to give them a reasonable time to improve. We need to provide supports along the way. Do you need to have training? Do you need to have mentoring? Those are all things we need to provide. It needs to be documented. We have to tell them what happens if they don't get better, and the evaluator has to be fair. And if you get in front of you a request to non-renew an employee, and this work, hard work hasn't been done, then there is not just cause. Okay.
So there's a question, a related question. It says, what is the board process if the board wishes to initiate a termination, but the superintendent is not willing to make the recommendation?
Okay, you know, that's a really good question. So if we're talking about teachers, there is no mechanism. It doesn't exist. The, the superintendent starts the process. But really, what you're saying is this, what you're saying is, we have a superintendent who is fundamentally at odds with the board around matters of performance. And if that is an issue, then we're really talking about supervision of the superintendent, right? Because that is the board's job. If, if we believe as a board that we have teachers who are not performing consistent with expectations, and there is no consequence, no accountability, that means that administrators are not doing their jobs. And, and the way the chain of command works is superintendent is supervised by the board, superintendent supervises the principal, principal supervise the teachers. And, and every step along the way, if, if the superior is dissatisfied with the way things are going, then, you know, everything I just said about, about negligent performance goes back, is, we're back at it again. The, the superintendent needs to understand what your expectations are, how they are not meeting those expectations, what good performance looks like. And, and, and all you're doing, Sue, by asking me that question is suggesting that we are not engaging in the kind of supervision and evaluation of our superintendent that we need to.
There's another question as well. I think it relates back to your last slide.
Bring it on.
And it says, who needs to see this in writing? I think they're referring to the, the plan.
Yeah, yeah. So who needs, the employee needs to see this in writing, and you as a board, if you're going to take disciplinary action, need to see this in writing, right? Like we, look, we, we as schools are, are fair. That's, that's who we are. We treat employees in a way that is fair. And this, this concept of due process incorporates fairness. And isn't it only fair if somebody is not doing a good job? And we're talking negligent performance here, we're not talking misconduct. Where we say to them, hey, this is how you're falling short. These are the things that need to get better. And, and all these factors that, that I've identified need to be present. And if they're not, then fundamentally, we as, as the managers are not doing the work we need to do. And in holding your administration accountable, board members, you need to consider those issues when you're making the decisions. And, you know, there'll be times where the decisions you make may be unpopular with the administration, but the reality is this, you know, like we, we need to, the administration needs to do its work, the teachers need to do their work, and you as a board need to do your work, and all of it is based on what the law requires. Okay. Um, so we, we talked about, so very quickly, and I'm sorry, I've already gone over, it's like I am long-winded, it's one of my many, many faults. So, so let me say this about, about due process and board hearings. We, we as boards need to be careful. We need not, not to know too much. We need to be careful what information we have if we wish to sit in our quasi-judicial capacity in making decisions about employees' termination. And, and what the Vermont Supreme Court said to us is that if there is bias, and bias might be actual bias, or the probability of actual bias, then a board member may not decide the issue. The question then becomes, so what is bias? I, I always, you know, here we are, another ad for, for, for the V SBA policies, Sue created a conflict of interest policy. And, and that is inherent in that is this concept of bias. A conflict of interest is a bias. And it means a situation when a board member's private interests, as distinguished from their interests as a member of the public, would benefit from or be harmed by their actions as a board member. And that applies as much in making decisions about the everyday operations of the district as it does in making decisions about employment. The, the Supreme Court said, bias will only exist in the most extreme situations. There is a presumption of honesty and integrity. So, so look, if, if, if you as board members learn things about the case as part of your activities as a board member, I mean, you're supposed to know stuff that happens in your district, you get brief from now, now and then by your, your superintendent or your principals about what's going on, that's to be expected, and that happens. But board members who engage in personal investigations, right? You go to the superintendent, hey Sally superintendent, I'd like to see Mary Jo's personnel file. No, no. What we need to understand is that stuff that comes to you in the matter of, in the normal course of business, okay, that won't be biased. But where you go out and do your individual work, or where you have some personal connection to the decision, then there may be bias. And understand this, if there is one biased person who is involved in the process, I fear it, it undermines the integrity of the entire process. All right. So, so be quick about this, right? Brenda, board chair, will preside over a teacher termination hearing. Tony Teacher is her cousin's husband. She wasn't close with him, so it ought to be fine, right? And the question is, I don't know, it depends. The answer is, I don't know, it depends. But more importantly, is process. How do we handle this? There ought to be disclosure. We ought to find out if there's an objection by anybody. And if there is an objection, Brenda needs to do some soul searching about whether she ought to be involved. But the beginning of the process is disclosure. And what do we do? If Brenda says, I'm sitting in this case, there's nothing you can do. And all the other board members say, but we don't want you to sit in this case, Brenda. This is your cousin's husband. And the answer is this, I don't know. There is no mechanism in the statutes to eject a board member from a quasi-judicial process. What we can do is if, if Brenda has bias in favor of, of the employee, we can outvote Brenda when it comes time to make a decision. All right, we're not going to do another one of these issues because we're almost out of time. What about this? We don't really want to have an expensive louder mill or seventeen fifty-two or two forty-three hearing. You know, we'd have to hire a lawyer for the board, hire a lawyer for the administration, a court reporter. That's thousands and thousands of dollars. Why don't we just put the principal on paid leave to the end of the year? How incredibly brilliant is that? Right? What a clever way to deal with this. Except, the Vermont Supreme Court has said, if you do that, that's really like firing somebody without giving them right, the right to a hearing. So the answer is, we are not okay. Very quickly, right to free speech versus defamation, right? What is defamation? Defamation is where you say something or write something to another person that is untrue, and you showed negligence or greater fault by virtue of publishing that untrue statement, and it causes harm to somebody, reputational harm. What that means is that we as board members need to be careful how we describe the misconduct of employees, how we describe our reaction to things employees do. I, I, I would say that here, you'll see my tips. I like it if we have one person who is going to speak for the board on these issues, there's less opportunity to get it wrong. I, I think it is important to avoid statements about specific employees and respond with generalities. I hate interviews because, you know what? Message discipline is so hard for so many people, right? It's not, it's really hard when someone says, but what about this? The reporter asks you, but what about this? And it's hard to say, I, I'm not talking about that. So I would suggest to you, let's just write, send them a statement. Remember, what do newspaper stories look like? They look like this. Joe says this, Sally says this, this is, this is the rest of the story. Wait, one side says this, the other side says that. Why can't we provide that information in the form of a statement? We'll get our, our side into the story because they always put your part in there, but we'll do it in a way with words we like and that do not create legal exposures for us. Okay, what might that look like? Might look like this, right? We, we, we talk in generalities, right? We, we don't like sexual misconduct, it's horrible, we, it's reprehensible, we don't put up with it. Student safety is our highest, highest priority, we never tolerate it. And if we find out this happens, these are the, all the things we do to get to the bottom of it, and if we find out any employee has engaged in that super bad conduct, we fire them on the spot. Can't talk about this specific employee, wink, wink. But that's how we, that's how we deal with it without running the risk of getting sued. Okay, free speech rights. What about our employees? But I have the right to say whatever I want. Well, our employees do have free speech rights, but here are the limitations. It doesn't go on and on forever. They can talk about matters of public concern if it does not attend, if it's not in furtherance of their job duties, right? Like you, you know what? If you don't want the teacher to put up the Nazi flag in the classroom, they don't have a right to do it. There's no free speech rights in the classroom. Decorations in the classroom are not subject to free speech rights. Now, what the teacher does at home, the flag the teacher puts up on their, on their yard or in their yard, on their flagpole, that's up to them. That may be free speech. But, but even free speech, if it is a matter of public concern, if it is the kind of thing that undermines our ability to do the work of the district, even though it's free speech, there's a balancing test, we can still restrict that speech. Okay. Last issue. Tony Teacher recently read Mein Kampf. He posts picture, pictures of Hitler on the internet, sends messages that other than genocide and eugenics, he had some really good ideas. Tony is careful not to discuss his views at school. Is this protected free speech? Can we discipline him for it? And what I would suggest to you as you as a board, you know, there's like, there's some free speech you don't have to tolerate. It is so extreme, it is so outrageous that you can terminate employees because it is the kind of speech, in this case- because it is the kind of speech, in this case, hate speech, that undermines a teacher's ability to engage in the activities that are necessary to be a teacher. It undermines irretrievably relationships with students, with coworkers, with parents. And that's the kind of thing where you can restrict that speech. All right, final thoughts. 6:40, sorry, on a beautiful evening. Let me say this. Look, we, we have, we've done what I'll call the speed round. We, we've been through these subjects very quickly. But what I want you to remember more than anything, if I had to distill it to its essence, it looks like this. We need a really good process for hiring. If boards are going to be involved, we, we need to get everybody on the same page about what we ask and what we don't ask. And we need to have message discipline when we are talking to candidates to make sure that we are not considering, we are not talking about, and we are not acting upon protected characteristics. We have to be thoughtful about the process and notify people in advance about what it's going to look like so they can ask for accommodation if they need it. Um, when we hire somebody, let's make sure we give them a contract we can live with if we have that right, something that gives us maximum latitude. If we are involved in terminations, and boards often are, it is a, you know, it's a very formal process. It looks like a court trial. And you as a board need to understand that if it's a for-caus standard, and it oftentimes is with teachers and with administrators, you know, this is not easily satisfied, that there, there are standards to be met. And part of the job of your administrators is to meet those standards, to dot the i's and cross the t's, to effectively, and these are, you know, this is a policy governance way of putting it, to, to act on your policies, to execute on them in a way that encompasses the virtue, the, the value of fairness. And then the, the last, the last part is on, on, on talking about these things. You know, like we all want to talk. Yeah, that, that's why you were elected to the school board. You're talkers. And that's a good thing. Except when we're talking about employees. And then the, the corollary is true. Employees have rights to talk. And if we start taking action against employees based on their rights, we, we may incur significant liability. So as Forrest Gump said, that's all I got to say about that. Um, questions if there are?
I don't see any questions right now. One of the things that, that comes to mind for me as far as a takeaway from today, Pietro, is, is you presented a lot of information in a short amount of time. And I think if I was a school board member listening to this, it would be important for me to just sort of understand that this is a very complex area, complex issues, and sort of know when it would be important to get in touch with the board's attorney. What do you think?
Yeah, so look, um, you know, if nothing else, I just want you to be sensitive to these issues. And I don't expect you to sit through an hour and 10 minutes of this and be an expert in the field. But, but if you're sensitive to the issues and you have a, a general idea of how this needs to operate, you know the right questions to ask the people who are the experts. And yes, I encourage you to work with your superintendents, many of whom I know and I have great respect for, and your lawyers, to make sure that your hiring processes and your firing processes have integrity.
Thank you. I still don't see any questions. So I think we're ready to wrap up. And so I'd like to thank you, Pietro, for spending this time with us, and also all of our attendees for being with us on this beautiful evening.
No, thank you all. Have a great evening. Goodbye.
Good night, everyone.